I'd like to call this town council meeting to order. Please, Roxanne, join me in the presence of the House of Representatives.
For allegiance to God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Eichler?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McRatten?
Here.
Mr. Song?
Here.
At this time, are there any resident and property owners who wish to speak before the council? And please limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joan Smith. I reside at 58 Mohegan Road in Groton, and I'm president of Groton Open Space Association. I want to thank you for considering the closure of Lame Town Road Extension. I will submit a letter in favor of the closure. It's a copy of the letter that I sent to Mr. Cherry and the town of Leder, planning and zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other property owners wish to speak at this time?
Good evening. My name is Maestefan. I live on Lantern Hill Road. I am here to talk about good neighbors. I volunteer for Leder ambulance about thirty-eight hours a week. I volunteer with the PTO. I'm on a Parks and Rec Commission. I do a lot of stuff for my church, which I love. But I live in here where I live at. I live on Lantern Hill Road, and on Saturday, I was attacked by a large dog. I had been out twice earlier in the morning and chased this dog off along with a smaller dog that was with it. On the third time, I ran out the door. I had my radio on. I was responding to a call for Leder ambulance. And again, this dog was trying to get into my chicken coop. Now, I have a long history with pit bulls and German shepherds and white wolf dogs from down the street coming up and killing my animals, threatening my dogs, threatening my children. Every time before, when I would run towards them and scare them away, they would go away. The third time on Saturday morning, when I went towards my coop, the dog, again, took off. I went over to put the board back in the door to secure it, and the dog came around the corner and latched onto my arm. There was no bark, there was no yip. It just laid into me. If I had not fallen back against my chicken coop, I probably would have been mauled. I had to hit the dog several times to get it to break free. And it didn't break free until I actually had to pull out my pocket knife and stab an animal. So, it's been a long problem for where I live. I have the first house, which is right against reservation land. I have made numerous complaints in the past to the police department and the animal control officers. They've been very responsive, very gracious to answer my concerns, both for the noise of the dogs barking through the night, the drunks that park at the bottom of my driveway because I live next to the casino, you know, just the constant debris that's on our yard, drunken fights from the neighbor next door. But my family cannot go in our backyard without being fearful that these dogs are going to come through. I have an elevated back porch. I've had this pit bull mastiff before. Tried to climb up on the back porch where my eight-year-old and four-and-a-half-year-old son was playing, and this was last summer, so they were even younger. I have two small dogs that are twenty-pound dogs. These pit bull, a white pit bull and this pit bull mastiff mix jumped the fence and went after my dogs. Since last spring, I've had nineteen chickens killed. So, I reported it right away to dispatch what had happened. They sent the animal control officer right away to check on the welfare of the dog. She tracked the dog down. I gave her a statement later in the afternoon after I completed my ambulance's runs. It is a shame that our police and our animal control officers do not have the means to go after these large dogs other than giving roaming dog citations. It's a shame that homeowners are advised, "We'll get a video camera, prove that they were on your property," when it happens repeatedly. It's a shame that my spouse can't run up and down Lantern Hill anymore because the dogs will chase her. So, town council, please pass ordinances that have bite, something that's going to help our animal control officer actually go out and confiscate these dogs when they're a threat to people. Why should I have to be bit twice by a dog? This dog has only bit one person, from what I've told. This dog has a long history of biting, not biting, but a long history with the animal control officer. They knew immediately which dog I was talking about. This dog is quarantined for fourteen days and will be given back to the owner. I have spent another hour of my day today giving a full police report just because of the severity of the wound to the dog. It's not fair. So, please, noise ordinance, something to confiscate these big dogs when any incident happens. God forbid it would have been my child. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the mayor plans to address this under his mayor's report further along in the meeting, but thank you for calling that to our attention. Any other resident or property owners wish to speak? Mr. Lamb?
Robert Lamb, Ninety-Nine Lame Town Road. Found a very interesting article in the paper on March twentieth pertaining to our dog panel. Seems that it's been neglected. Some of our frontline department heads were given notice last year by the inspection team from the state of Connecticut. No work was done. I have met with Sergeant from the K-9 officer. I also have met with the people at work up there. They requested numerous times for repairs to be made to the facility. No response. And then I read in the paper that Mayor John Rattalico had no knowledge of this on March twentieth. So, this started last October. So, the department head that's responsible for those facilities, I don't know, he just ran over the mayor with his car number, LD-38. Don't care. So, I don't know who's driving it, but got thrown under the bus by the article. And they're requesting $20,000 now to fix up the deteriorated conditions, the water heater, other items, the ventilation. We have a maintenance man that's on staff, comes and looks at it and leaves. I'll be back. That's from Mr. Kermit's report. I figure you people all got that. I got up in the mayor's office the other day. They requested job proposals, bid specs, so they can do a bid waiver. Looks like a four-year-old kid did these. One of them says Public Works is going to do the labor, and they're charging for the whole facility. You take a look. Do you guys have this package? There's four proposals in here, and you couldn't even do a job of putting a fence up around your garden, and they want twenty thou-- well, fifteen thousand. Five thousands for beautification or whatever you want to call it. So, before you spend the taxpayers' money to do a project which is on one piece of paper for four different items and issue a bid waiver, you're wasting our money. And I really think that better control of the people that are representing our departments are trying to do their job, but when they get no support from leadership and let a place deteriorate that costs us taxpayer money as a taxpayer, I'm a little upset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Are there any other citizens that wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, committee, commission, and board reports. Mr. Jaskowitz?
Well, good evening. Chairman Davis, Councilor here. I am the chairman of the permanent municipal building committee. I've been in that capacity for, I guess, about four months now, but I've been on that committee since its inception. Right now, we have three major projects going on. I'll spend about thirty seconds on two of them and then talk some more about the final one. First of all, the three projects we have going with the permanent municipal building committee. The first is the Algen Heights Water Project. That project is in its final phase. We're working on getting the pump station installed so we can get the water pressure where it needs to be. There were some engineering challenges in getting that precast pump station up the hill in the position where it needed to be. That's been worked out. Some trial runs have been done with a truck loaded to the appropriate weight and size to make sure we could get it up there. The winter's been challenging this year, as you all know, and that seems to be on track, so we should be able to close out that project under budget in the near future. The second project is the police facility project, which is to be constructed on a site right next to here where the old firehouse is. We recently put out bids for demolition of the existing structures that are in the way of the new building, and received those bids back and selected a contractor, which was lower than the estimate that we had in our architect's proposal for how much it was going to cost. And that'll be, that contract will be signed soon, and we'll begin with demolition in the coming months. The plan is continuing on-site, the site plan, final development on that, moving along with various committees like planning and zoning and things that have to look at that, as well as getting through all the wickets with septic systems, with ledge light and those things, to be able to get out for a construction bid in May of 2014 to start construction this summer. The third project that we have, any questions on the first two before I move on to the third? Okay, the third one, the one that I think you're waiting for me to talk about today. I did send a letter that was late today. It should be in your packets, and I'm going to read that letter since most of you probably didn't have a chance to look at it, and it is, in aggregate, it really takes care of my report. The letter is to Chairman Davis. Dear Chairman Davis, On 24 July 2013, the Leder Town Council assigned the Leder School Facilities Improvement Project to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee. This included work to determine the feasibility and the cost associated with improvements to the Leder Middle School and the consolidation of Leder Center School and Gallup Hill School into a single elementary school to serve the eastern portion of the town. The Permanent Municipal Building Committee solicited bids and later contracted with Silver Petroselli Associates of Hamden, Connecticut, to assist with our analysis. Our tasking was modified by your 28 January 2014 letter, which followed a favorable vote by the town council to investigate the feasibility and the cost of constructing a new middle school on the current site of Leder Middle School or at the current location of Leder Center School, including the possible purchase of adjacent property to support the construction and demolition of Leder Center School following that new construction. I want the council to know at this point that no modification of Silver Petroselli Associates' contract was required, as there is already due diligence requirements for all renovated-as-new school projects, that municipalities must demonstrate that renovate-as-new is less expensive than new construction when filing for state education construction grants. Although the schools facilities project is still in draft format, we have received preliminary cost estimates, which have provided the Permanent Municipal Building Committee with sufficient information to warrant recommendation of abandoning new construction based on the significant cost in both terms of total project cost and town share after state reimbursement. The PMBC voted unanimously to recommend to the town council that the option and any additional PMBC and associated Board of Ed effort toward new construction as a middle school be abandoned. The following cost estimates were provided, and you'll see the tables inside your letter, and I'll read them for the folks that are here. For Leder Middle School, to renovate the school as new, and what that essentially means is tearing the school down to bare bones and essentially rebuilding it within the same basic structure that we have, you get a school that's essentially a brand-new school. That, for a ninety-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five-square-foot school, total building cost of thirty-six point five million, and the state grant for that would be estimated at sixty-two point five percent, leaving the town share at thirteen million, six-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. That cost per square foot works out to about three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars a square foot, and that's right about in line with Silver Petroselli told us at the beginning that we should estimate around three-hundred-and-seventy dollars a square foot for a renovated-as-new project. Now, that renovated-as-new project assumes that the school is essentially of the same footprint that it is now. The school changes a lot, and the plans for that will all be presented at some time in the near future. But new construction for that middle school on the same site, it would actually be built right adjacent to the middle school because we have to continue to have middle school. And even though there were a few challenges with doing that there, they came up with a way to make that work on-site, essentially the same-sized building, but the difference is that the cost for building a new school is five-hundred-and-seven dollars is the estimated cost per square foot. So, when you look at that, you have a total building construction cost of forty-nine point five million. You'll see the change there on your sheet, with the state grant now reduced to fifty-two point five percent. So, that means that we filed for that state grant, leaves the town share at twenty-three million, five-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. A difference of nine point eight million dollars between renovate-as-new and building-new. And that's assuming we build on the same site. A lot of stuff is the same, septic issues, water, we have all the same things going on. But what the council has to do is to investigate building that school in Leder Center. Now, there's just not, you physically can't fit a middle school on the property that's there, and there is adjacent property that was for sale, and you asked us to look at that. We don't know what the purchase price would be. We did check to see what it was listed for, and at the time, we checked it was six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for about twenty-nine and a half acres. That new construction, taking the same building we would have built at the Leder Middle School site and building it there instead, there being the center of town, we're looking at, again, same basic cost to build the building, so we've got the nine-point-eight million-dollar difference right off the bat. Throw in the cost to purchase the land, and then the land would require site work. We would have to bring in some roadways. Our analysis, we're starting to get concerned about the amount of school traffic and things on the road, so Fairway Drive is one option, Iron Street is another option, but Iron Street has enough issues with curb cuts and things already. But looking at options for that, there are also a lot of unknowns on that property. It's never been built on. There are geotechnical concerns as far as borings would have to be done, environmental surveys would have to be done to ensure there's no wetlands and things like that, and the utilities would have to be extended further back to the new site. A lot of TBDs involved in there, but I can assure you that they will only cost money, that it will not cost less money to put pipe in the ground and extend electrical. So, with that, in my letter, I point out that unknowns at the Leder Center site can only increase the costs or impact the project negatively. An environmental survey as well as geotechnical survey is required to determine the site feasibility should any additional consideration be given to this site. And based on the above information provided to you, and you can see the numbers there, the Permanent Municipal Building Committee recommends that the town council consider the new construction option for Leder Middle School to be financially impractical and to remove it from consideration. So, that's my letter, and I'll answer any questions you have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jaskowitz? We do have a sort of placeholder motion in the agenda, so we can word engineer it just a tad, and I think we'll have what you need to after we discuss if you wish to stay and listen to that discussion or not. I would like to thank you, because when we created the building committee, we anticipated that you would have to work hard. We didn't anticipate you have three projects at one time, two of them being major projects, but we thank all of you for your hard work. It's a great committee, so I'm sure the rest of you would concur.
Given other questions, I'll go ahead and take seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee, committee commission, or board reports? Comments of town councils? Mr. Song?
I just wanted to send cares and concerns for the mother of Police Officer Eric Rushore, who was hurt in a car accident, I think almost two weeks ago. She's still in critical condition. We don't have a lot of information, but it was a terrible accident, and I just wanted to let the office to know and the family know what our thoughts are with.
Any other comments for town councils?
Mrs. McGrath? I was at the senior commission meeting today, and they were very excited. They have formed a hiking club at the senior center, and their first hike is going to be Friday, this Friday, the twenty-eighth, 1:15 at the Nathan Lester House. Age is no limit. Everybody is welcome, so I hope we will be successful. Also, starting in May, the director will handle the rent rebate. That's a state law that provides a reimbursement program for Connecticut renters who are elderly or totally disabled, and there's a certain income limit. Persons renting an apartment or room, living in cooperative housing or a mobile home may be eligible for this program. Rebates can be up to nine hundred for a married couple and seven hundred for single persons. The renters rebate amount is based on the graduated income scale, and the amount of rent may be, excluding telephone, be the same as made in 2013. So, anybody that is eligible, just call Lauren at the senior center.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
Just like to remind everybody that Saturday, April fifth, Leder's having their 5K road race, and apparently they have, it's at nine AM, and they have over a hundred and sixty people, I believe, registered to run in, and it would be fantastic. And for those that still want to register, I believe that you can even as of the day of the race. So, it's a nine AM race. Get up there at seven-thirty, and you can still participate.
I would just like to mention that we've had, I think it was yesterday or maybe two days ago, a situation at Leder Center School. I continue to have concerns with the situation at bus time, with parents dropping their students off, parents that, for whatever reason, their children don't ride bus. While saying "I told you so" sometimes gives you satisfaction, it certainly wouldn't in my case, but it is an accident waiting to happen at that school, and something needs to be done about it. I don't have an answer for what needs to be done, but it is a concern. I know the mayor's also has a concern. They mentioned it in his report as well, but I just want to put it on the record that I know many people are concerned about it.
Okay. Minute approval, no motion?
No.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. Corte?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Eichler?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine and favorites, no opposed? Motion carries. You have your communication list, referrals, committee subcommittee, council subcommittee liaison reports, admin?
Administration committee has not met since our last meeting. Consequently, I have nothing to report.
Okay, finance?
Finance committee's met several times over the last week since the last meeting. Biggest thing on our agenda at this point is reviewing the budget that's submitted by the mayor. We've held three meetings, the first three Tuesday of March to go through that. We held another meeting this evening to wrap up those discussions and start looking at how we're going to proceed forward with that consultation with the mayor. We'll continue that process over the next several weeks. We have planned the public hearing in April and then the town meeting in May. Ahead of that, we have a board hearing with council and the finance committee. That's the big, one big, in addition to the items that are on the agenda. At the finance committee last week, we had a presentation by Mr. Mazum, Public Works Director, related to our road capital improvement project. We have spent upwards of about three-and-a-half million dollars of allotted money in addition to the appropriated money of about four-hundred thousand dollars per year over the last three years. And we all know that the condition of the roads, especially the main archery roads, is very, very good. We do know that there is work still to be done on the roads that are not the main roads. He presented the plan, has presented a town meeting about four years ago. We expected a certain quality of road, and we have exceeded that based on his identification of a couple of processes that we didn't anticipate that have lengthened the life of those roads. We continue to look at that, and then part of that process, we're looking at what the annual amount of money we need to put into the budget each year before that. Because we have an amount for this year, but we're looking each year at what that needs to be in order to not just maintain what we have, but also going after these other roads that are off the main roads. In addition to that...
Any questions for fundamentals? Hearing none, information technology?
Idea's not met. Report.
Handers planning, public works.
Handers is also not met.
Okay, we're in that off week. Committees haven't met. Board of Ed liaison report?
Yes, there's never an off week, particularly in education, having been twice a month. First of all, board members made some congratulatory comments to our girls' basketball team for really an exceptional season, and to a fourth grader, Karen Espinoza, who was honored by the state for recent poster contests, like throwing the happy news. Under committee and liaison reports, the finance chair indicated that the board budget looks okay for the remainder of this year. The school safety committee discussed new software related to IDs, which will make it easier to track those entering and exiting our school. Ag science committee indicated that the high school enrollment in this department is right on track for this year. And just a special project I want to mention, our ag science kids raised two pigs and slaughtered them, producing three-hundred-and-sixty pounds of meat, and this was given to fifteen different AD families in local towns. And then, the pig pens are being turned into vegetable gardens, and the produce from those gardens will also be donated to the ADs. It's a great project. The business manager reported that a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars remains in this year's budget. We've exceeded the allotted oil and natural gas money, and that at my house, too. We are currently hearing from companies with programs guaranteed to result in long-term energy savings, and ag science tuitions were a little lower than expected, but more than we had budgeted. The state raised the operating grant, we're getting more money from the state for ag science, but lowered the tuition costs for sending towns. So, more or less balances out. Board received a request to name the Leder High School driveway, the Robert J. Donovan Lane. The request has been sent to the Board of Ed Facilities Committee for consideration. They left my name out of it, but their request was for me as a citizen with tremendous encouragement from the Leder High School Alumni Association. Facilities Committee will meet on Monday. I'm hopeful for a good outcome. The elementary school principals discussed details of the approximately two percent increase in next year's operating budget. About sixty-five percent of the increase, they indicated, is for supplies and books due, in part to money having been held back this year. And finally, under new business, by a five-to-three vote, the board accepted a 2014-2015 calendar, which includes school on Veterans Day and on February seventeenth. Graduation will be held on June twentieth. As many of you know, they sought community input through surveys. They got a ton of responses. Not as helpful, only because the responses were pretty evenly split on the key issues that they were gathering information on.
And that's it. Awesome. The end.
Those are the words we're looking for.
Are there any questions for Board of Ed Liaison?
I would just say that I would happily support your proposal for the naming.
I thought you might.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, other liaison reports, let's start with WPCA.
WPCA conducted its regular meeting at 7:00 PM last night. They reviewed but did not accept the minutes from its February meeting due to several inaccurate statements along with one or more topics missing from the minutes. The water and sewer budget drafts for 2014-15 were presented and discussed. The WPCA approved the sewer budget, which does not come to the town council, as you know, for approval because by state statute, the WPCA is the approving authority in the sewer budget. The town planner did write to the McGuire Group, got a response about the long-awaited one-four-year sewer study. The reply stated the group intends to complete its project, but the WPCA agreed that if there is no action, the next step would be to inform the company that they're going to contract because the study's been going on for way too long. Counts receivable are holding steady, around sixty-six thousand, but are anticipating a decline of the WPCA moves to monthly billing. They also received several assessment appeals in connection with the Algen Heights Water Project, and they referred them to a subcommittee that will review each assessment appeal and make recommendations to the WPCA. The committee has all the relevant data, including the town engineers' assessments, the individual letters of appeal, and the ground utilities' technical review as requested by the town engineer. The WPCA continues to discuss the failure to comply with cross-connection inspections, including the process for billing customers who refuse to allow cross-connections and the possibility of sending a shut-off notice to customers who refuse to comply, because these refusals put the town in a position of non-compliance with state DPA regulations. In continuing the discussion of the water budget, the WPCA reviewed the contribution to CNR, this capital-limited recurring fund. Continued work on the estimated value to replace the entire system... Continued work on the estimated value to replace the entire system, the projected cost of Route 117 water purchases, which declined slightly, and that's based on the last 12 months of purchases. And they voted to recommend the budget to the town council. The WPCA then voted to go into executive session to discuss a long-term contract with Grattan Utilities. And after coming out of the session, the WPCA voted on a motion to recommend the town council approve the following contract agreement with Grattan Utilities. First, a water system operations agreement to begin at the end of the current three-month extension and terminate on June 30, 2016. And a billing agreement to begin upon signature of the mayor after approval by the town council. And that's still being negotiated, but terminating on June 30, 2015. With the billing agreement, if we go forward with that, the WPCA would be able to provide monthly billing for residential ratepayers and also offer additional forms of payment such as online credit, online and credit card payment. And monthly billing, as I mentioned earlier, would provide sooner notice to make payers of unexpected high usage, which is most often caused by blinking, small blinking devices. And when they go into tech for three months, all of a sudden you have a high warrant. So hopefully we might see some changes with that too. And that's my report, the end.
Any questions? Yes, sir. Any questions for WPCA? Permanent Municipal Building Committee, anything to add beyond Mr. Jessica Wits reported?
Just some additional details on the building committee met on Monday, a special meeting. I will go through the school project because that's mostly what was discussed. The Algen Heights Water Project, they worked through the test run truck for access back and they were making ready for the slab for that pump station, which is the final phase. For the police facility project, the contractor, Chaconson-Humes, has held several meetings, coordination. On the 13th, they met for a site civil design review. On the 20th, they met for an IT coordination meeting related to closed-circuit TV, electronics access, radio communications and the like. They have a next meeting scheduled tomorrow to go through the interior building designs, like paint, carpeting, colors, that kind of thing. That'll wrap up all the coordination meetings you need to finalize the design process. The mayor and Tina Finkelstein, network communication vendor, one of the discussion items is what we're doing with the tower, relocating it by new, what's required for communications. So they're still working through that with communications plus. There's also an issue with falls on his own regulations they're working with through the contractor. The other major issue was discussed between last meeting and this was related to sprinklers requirements. The fallout from the meeting was they would be going to the state fire marshal to get his opinion based on the usage, where he drafted a letter and requesting the state's opinion, that opinion that would carry out what's required for the building. Mayor's also been negotiating with the adjacent, discussing with the adjacent landers, make sure they're aware of what's going on. So it's good discussion with the three property owners surrounding the facility, make sure they're aware of both what's going on, planning stages and what potential impacts or improvements there are on that property, make sure that there are no issues. Especially when construction starts, we don't have surprise neighbors going on, that's going well. There was substantial discussion about the site plan with Chad Fosh related to the exterior specific water runoff as well as landscaping. The committee was come to agreement on the preliminary desire to continue the finalization of that moving through to the planning zone and other committees and towns that have approved. And finally, they reviewed the demolition bid, which Chairman Jessica talked about and selected the contractor format.
Lauren, any questions? Okay, other liaison reports. I'll report to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. In response to the question that was raised by Councilor Demirovsky at the March 12 council meeting regarding March 3rd use of a state police K-9 on Long Oak Road, I did look into that and it confirmed my suspicions, which is that while Leger has two K-9s, if you think of it in terms of a 24/7 operation, it is difficult and there are occasions when neither one of those officers will be on duty. And that was the case here. When that does happen, again, we do have state mutual aid and I do believe that's appropriate just as our K-9 on occasion is used in other towns. So that was the reason the case, both of those officers were not on duty at the time and it's certainly more cost-effective to have the state take care of that and that is one of the benefits that we get from the current situation. On legislative issues right now, the town as well as the state are in the middle of their legislative and budgetary process. The state is in a short session and usually that means the budget is pretty much done so they can spend their time on other mischief. And they're not disappointing. There are two bills in committee right now. One regards the assessment of homes under construction. Legislation was passed that allows towns to assess both residential and commercial construction while it is happening and that allows us to get certain tax revenues because we can only do that once a year. You can only do new construction and that type of thing once a year. So if you think of it with the normal span of construction, you know, you can lose out on a significant amount of revenue. And so we are permitted to do that, it is something that we do quite aggressively, not because I like aggressively going after taxes, like taxpayers, but because I sympathize with the rest of the people who have to pay taxes. So again, they're talking about limiting that somewhat and restricting the ability to do that and we are opposing that. The other issue is something more sensitive, it's sometimes referred to as the mental bill. It was proposed last year, it was not passed. It was a reaction to Sandy Hook and what it did is it allowed for compensation for emergency services workers who witnessed certain violent acts. The problem, while it's well-intended, is that it, you don't know that, it's difficult to pass a bill, but it's very easy to tweak a bill. And that's what we usually find happening. And what it's proposed now is the language is being changed, first of all, to say someone who visually witnesses a traumatic event or visually witnesses the immediate aftermath of such a traumatic event. Now, you know, you do the math on that and figure out what that means. The other thing is they're talking about, whereas it would have come out of a state fund, now they're talking about mandating full workers' compensation for state municipal employees. So I think that's something that bears are watching. Legislature is also considering expanding hardened hypertension for certain workers to include cancer. So again, while some of these are well-meaning, you can imagine the cost to state and local government. I do need some help from the council and it involves grants and I'm not sure, I didn't get a chance to read the charter and some of you may be better versed than I am, but I know that in many cases, and I just think at just the last meeting we did it, the council will authorize me to apply for a grant. And if you look around the town, you'll notice that we apply for many grants, some of them very small. Our emergency management director applies for very small amounts of money. So I think I'm asking for clarification from the finance committee on when I need to do that. Right now, our social services youth counselor is applying for several small grants from local agencies and banks to help subsidize some of our youth programs. I haven't come to the council and asked for approval to do that, but if I could just have clarification, I'm not sure if it involves the magnitude of the grant or if there are matching funds involved, which I suspect may be the issue. As far as the wolf dog issue and just generally dogs on Long Pond, I will tell you that I'm taking this matter very seriously. First thing this morning, I consulted with our police and ACO and contacted them because it was reported that a DEEP officer would be in the town. In fact, he was. I did speak with him. I'm satisfied that he took the appropriate initial actions, but there are jurisdictional issues involved. And so for that reason, he will be, he is going to get a representative from the state DEEP that oversees Indian reservations. The particular reservation that's in question does fall under the jurisdiction of the state DEEP and he's offered to set up a meeting. And so again, I'm taking this very seriously, both in terms of that and, you know, any of these incidents where individuals have been threatened. I don't think that's, you know, living in fear is not something that our citizens should be subjected to from any means or from any source. And so I will be working on that, you can be sure of that. Finally, on the ACO facility, since the finance committee met last week and appropriated the money, I have had several meetings with all the involved departments and I'm satisfied that Public Works, and I have the evidence, Public Works has been working on this project since sometime last year. In fact, the quotes for the work have been received and those quotes were solicited by Public Works. And this work that's going to be accomplished will include a significant contribution from Public Works employees. The particular principal, Mr. Lamb, showed actually has a calculation of the labor that would be provided by Public Works. Obviously, we don't charge ourselves for that. And some of the material that Public Works is going to use is being paid for from the money that it will be appropriating. So again, I'm satisfied to think that they're doing what they absolutely can. We're still looking at, and I've charged them, to even look at some of the costs that we've solicited bids for to see what we could do ourselves. Keep in mind the fact that the building and grounds crew has only three to four employees and you're talking about maintaining over a dozen structures in this town in addition to the grounds. So I think that we have to be very careful in looking at that. I have to clarify my comments where I said about knowing nothing. If you're in the finance committee meeting, you'll recognize that one of the issues, and this is an issue that I think needs some work and I have spoken with our staff about it, is that none of us were aware that there were state inspections that were happening there. And in fact, I went back and listened to the transcript of the meeting to make sure that I heard things properly. In fact, there was no state report that was filed this time in January. I was led to believe in that being that it was, as some of you may have also. But we are in the process of getting those reports and looking at those to see what the deficiencies of that were reported now and in the past. There are some other comments. There are no big waivers involved in this project. I've looked at the quotes that were received and none of them would require a big waiver. And I'm not sure about conversations Mr. Lamb had with any town employees, but I will state that he should not be talking to any town employee without getting permission from me. Our town employees are not authorized to speak to people and give their opinions on different aspects of town government. So if there are questions, I'm available. My department heads are certainly available, but I would request that again, do not talk to our town employees. They are not authorized to make comments on the operation of the government. And that is my report.
Mayor, could you comment on the Leger School parking?
Oh, yes.
What you've done for it?
I, another area of frustration, mainly because I stare at it out my window every day at 3:00 PM. I concur with the chairman, it's a serious problem. I've spoken with the school administration. Last, late last year, we had met over there to look at possible solutions. We thought we had one. We're taking it incrementally, what we've done, right, what I requested they do and the superintendent assured me she did, is put a notice out to parents that if they are coming to pick up their children, they are not to stop and block traffic while waiting to enter the parking area. It is a very limited parking area and, you know, kind of to expand on what the chairman said, you know, if you're picking up your child at the school, that is above and beyond and that is secondary to the normal operation of the schools and to the traffic here. The big concern is emergency vehicles. You know, if an emergency vehicle tries to get through the center of town at 3:00 PM, they would have a serious problem. Some people are doing some crazy things in trying to avoid that traffic and I think that's a danger to individuals. So again, an announcement should have gone out to all of the parents at Leger Center School, if you're picking up your children, you know, that you should not block traffic there. If the traffic is stopped, go somewhere, come around and, or just wait. It's not going to be an easy one to solve, but I assure you, I'm taking it seriously. The police are also and we'll take it a step at a time.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
Okay, just briefly, Mr. Trejo, regarding the taxation under construction, how's that determined? Is it assessed at its value in its current state, like prior to being built? I mean, if it's halfway through the construction?
Yes.
Is the assessment based on as it exists halfway through, not what its value will be?
Yes, right. On, in the October 1st grant list, anything that's under construction, the assessor goes out and he basically looks at everything that's got a building. And yes, he uses some judgment, you know, foundation framing, closed-in and things like that. And, you know, Leger has a significant amount of new construction going on and we had, you know, a significant number of houses come on and he did that. You know, you get a development, obviously it's done in phases and you get combs in various degrees of completion. So yes, it is on a prorated basis.
I also just wanted to ask, because of the, you know, inclusion of ordinances and the concerns expressed by our citizens who's having trouble with the dogs, I assume the answer is yes, but do you believe we have the ordinances in place which, except for the complications due to the reservation property, to help her out with this set of circumstances?
I'm not aware of ordinance that would cover that. I think right now we would go by just, you know, the laws of the state as far, you know, we know we have roaming dog, you know, legislation or laws. I don't know of any ordinances as such that would do that. I know, and, you know, Mays did mention it, we've heard a lot of comments about noise ordinances. If you remember last year, Stonington went through a lot of that, you know, they do have a noise ordinance and it seemed to create more, you know, more stir than it solved. I understand and I get my share of barking dog calls. It is, it is an issue and I've dealt with some and unfortunately, what's said is frustrating as it's true, where you would have to, I know, videotape either what's happening, either the dogs coming on your property. We've had some successful cases where we find individuals for that, but it's a tricky thing, you know, you've got to get there at the right time. So we certainly do everything we can to enforce those sort of things, but some, some things are just don't have proper solutions.
More upsetting to Mays is the fear that these dogs, you know, ensue the children. Is there some way of tightening up these laws that would govern, you know, roaming dogs or dogs without leashes or, I mean, they are on town land when they're on, you know, her property.
Yeah. I don't know what we can do in terms of tightening up laws, but I intend to do everything I can to make sure that both our local officials and state officials go to the full extent of what they can do. I mean, by my logic, if you have a dog that is at all threatening on your property, you should, you know, again, in a perfect world, or as the chairman would say, if I were king, you know, I would think you have the authority to go and find that dog wherever it is and take that dog and take it away. No one should have to live in that kind of fear. Our police and ACO, from my conversations with them, you know, very often will tell you, we can't do certain things. You know, I remember at one point, you know, this was years ago, a former ACO telling us, well, you know, catch the animal and hold it until we get there. Well, you know, who's going to do that? So I don't know that the laws themselves, what can be done with... So it, I don't know that the laws themselves, what can be done with that, but I would certainly think, and it's going to be my emphasis with state officials, that there's a serious problem and it deserves a very, very serious solution.
Just one more thing on that topic. When, when somebody's livestock is being killed by this, these rogue dogs, does that take it to a different level with, with the state animal control, but, you know, there's, there's got to be, there's, you know, you know, when Mays is losing animals to, or livestock to these animals, there has to be some reasonable recourse other than establishing a meeting with somebody else and waiting for the next incident?
I, that's a good question, and I don't know the answer to that, but again, I know what I've heard from other people about this problem is that, you know, the police very much, and the ACO under their restrictions, may very well say to you, well, you've got to show me, you need to have, you know, how do you prove that? You know, these animals are, you know, I guess innocent until proven guilty, and that could be a problem. You know, unless you physically see it, and then even if you see it, the question's going to be, well, you know, how are you going to prove that when they show up? Again, I would think that we should be able to take extraordinary measures in that case.
Yes.
I would ask that the chairman refer this to my committee for investigation as to whether we can create new legislation on this.
I'd be happy to refer to you.
Thank you.
Any other guests?
Leading to the ACO work, the facility, there was a question out of Finance about what was really required, what the priorities were. As you said, there was no report in January. Do we know that all the work that's within this $20,000 is required to be done per directive from the state ACO? That was one of the outstanding questions.
And I can't, and I can't answer that, because there was no report given by the state, and this, and, and yet, we were told, and as you know, that we were under some deadline. Now, it, it, the way it was explained to me is this was kind of a courtesy that was done that, you know, because they saw we were, and obviously, when he came, when the ACO came to, to town, he was convinced that we were serious about making new repairs. So he knew it. Because of that, he stated that, you know, he would not write us up. I don't know that that was appropriate. I think at this point, we probably would have been better off had he given us a report. I've asked for the previous reports, because these are not new issues, and to date, I have not received anything as far as former year reports. So that's the dilemma that I have here. Again, I think we're doing, we're proceeding with some of the logical repairs, but I don't have anything in writing on that.
One of the more significant things, clearly painting and fixing the cages for the animals, things like that, but when you start knocking down a wall and putting in a door, is that required? What's the requirement? And if we're going to go off and do the work, and we find out that we haven't done it in the way, take a house example, it's not going to be a fire rated door. What's the requirement? I mean, that was not well discussed at Finance Committee, didn't seem like they knew. If you haven't seen the reports, do we know what's required? How are we going to proceed forward?
My understanding is that it needs to be a door that goes directly from the ACO into where the, the animals are. Right now, it's just a loud, it's a hall into that area. Have I seen something that requires that? I, I can't say that.
Any other questions for the mayor? Yes.
I want to comment, not a question, Mr. Mayor, but I want to comment about the, the traffic conditions at the Center City. I observed a long line of traffic myself over the last couple of weeks. Buses are trying to get in there, cars are trying to go in there and pick up kids. It was at 3:00 in the afternoon. It is a dangerous situation, and I'm going to make a request to the residents that if you are dropping your kid off at school, any school, for convenience, for picking it up, picking your child up, for convenience only, that you reconsider your decision to transport your child to school. The reason I ask that is that the taxpayers pay $45,000 per year per bus, and if we're not taking advantage of those, of those buses, then we're wasting money. You can't not send a bus, the bus is running empty, we're wasting the taxpayer dollars, and we're proliferating the situation, and it's now becoming worse. Seeing those cars backed up on Route 117 really concerned me. Now, we've, we've had Officer Brishore's mother hurt at another school, and we've had a, a very near serious accident at one of our own schools. So please, if you're just doing it for convenience, if you're a senior, if you have a driver's license, please think about whether you really need to drive to school to take the bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Song. Yes, Mr. Marshall.
I wasn't going to add anything to the dog kennel issue because it has got close to home, but I feel maybe I should on a couple of things. There are laws that address roaming nuisance. That's basically all they have to work with. They are governed by, by their own laws, and they have to follow their rules and regulations. And they're pretty tight. Some things just can't, can't be helped, but they are following the law to the letter. As far as the, the door going from the ACO office into the back of the kennel, that's kind of a safety issue, because right now, there's only one door to get to that room. So when you're back in that room, there's not a door, you're kind of trapped. So if you have an angry resident coming in that door, it's nice to have a second way out. So it's kind of a convenient thing, because you don't have to go out to the weather to get to the kennel, to maintain the kennel or help the animals, and it's a second way out of that one road. And if it was your spouse, you'd want that second way out. So it's kind of a safety, convenience kind of thing, just to be a good idea to have. The, um, this last page of this proposal, one that Mr. Lamb spoke of, it's, it's kind of tough to follow. It does look basic at best. I'm not exactly sure what the blocks are for. I'm thinking as for dividing walls in the kennel, and then the chain link in the front by Luther is for the actual cages. And Mr. Lamb, after we spoke this morning, I did give some advice. If we had Public Works doing, providing the labor, that would save us some money that we could put in forest materials for the future, so that's probably a good idea and keep our guys busy. So I'm all for that. The one thing that is missing from these proposals, though, is a, is a timeframe, because I do know firsthand that kennel can build to max capacity in a couple of hours, and this isn't something that can be stretched out, you know, one, three times, so there's no timeframe here. May I ask a question, Mr. Maslin? So I'd like to see that. There's probably more, but that's all I got for right now.
I would just like to add, as far as Mr. France, I think what Mr. France is referring to, if I may, is what kind of door does it have to be? Is it a fire rated door? Should, does it have to swing this way or does it that way? Is there a requirement, if they're asking for it? Is it, you know, like with new, with construction, what type of doors have to be? Does it have to be a metal door, wood door? Does it have to be this thick? Tempered, yeah, that's good. So that's, I think, I'm speaking for you. Is that exactly?
Because you have to close up, because we have an estimate for the work, but we don't know what's required. So is the estimate correct? Is it, is it, does it have all the requirements in it? We don't know.
Well, I think the estimate for that door, minimum code would be fine.
Okay, but now we spend $10,000 or whatever the money is to put that door in, that inspector comes back and says it's not good enough, we rip that door out and spend again.
Well, I'm sure they find out what the code is before they install the door.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you have that confidence. Should we have an estimate right now, which should be a building?
Yeah.
Not arguing with that, but we have, probably have estimates without knowing the requirements for what they, what they.
Well, I, I agree with that, that these, the official we have here is, is basic. There's a lot missing from what we have here tonight, and which is speaking to us is correct? Am I not understanding what you're asking, Mike?
No, that, that's it. We have a motion that we brought forward, and we don't have all the information, we're authorized, we have $20,000 and we're authorized to be spent, we don't know what's required. We don't know whether this will meet the requirements, or we have to do all this work, and there aren't, there is another one, it's asked and done. You don't know?
I had anticipated that we would have the reports, and that's why it was on the agenda. We, you know, sometimes we put things on the agenda anticipating that we're going to have other information. We don't have that information. Okay. Any other comments? I think, are we still on to mayor's reports? We digressed. Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Thank you. Okay, where's my agenda? Okay, we are not, this item is not already under whole business, correct?
No, it's not come to finance.
Not come to finance yet. Would anybody like to amend the agenda under new business? Finance Committee, item number one.
Make a motion to approve FY '14 appropriations, the amount of $6,138.32, as presented in the spreadsheet attached to Ledge Center File Number 2859.
Second.
Discussion.
Since these are insurance reversals primarily for, and also repayments on leases, contracts for leases that were changed, as an example, for the Comcast, Comcast to payment values that was reimbursed, they should just be applied back to the accounts.
Any questions for clients? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusse?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Ceborty?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number two.
Make a motion to authorize emergency appropriation for ACO facility repaired by transferring up to $12,000 from Account 21090305, 58915, seen or undesigned to Account Number 201040111, 58242, property maintenance ACO.
Second. Discussion.
As stated in the mayor's report, comments, and questions, I don't believe we have all the information that we need, nor do know, on the scope of repairs, if this is sufficient, if it meets the requirements of the state ACO. Until we have his report, we should wait until that to make sure we have those repairs documented and analyzed.
I would suggest that we table this until we have a report.
Is that a motion to table?
I will make that motion to table.
Is there a second?
I second.
No discussion. Roxanne, would you call the roll to table the vote?
Mrs. McRathen?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusse?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Ceborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
First name.
Eight in favor, one extension.
Motion carries. Let's see, item number three, demand use and plan.
I make a motion to approve the proposed resolution, authorize permanent closure of Land Town Road extension, as designated draft date of December 13th, 2013.
Second. Brief discussion?
So we've had a partial annual road closure of Land Town Road, a winner for maintenance costs, the maintenance costs, maintenance. We've received correspondence from the town property owners requesting a permit to go through the road. It went to planning a zone, public care, and it was approved there. Went to land use, approved the resolution, and drafted. I see no real reason to keep the road open, maintain the, the open space script.
Any discussion? Yes.
I see every reason to close.
That's it?
Yeah.
You should have said the end.
Sorry. Geez, what was I thinking?
Mr. Eichelberg?
I am not in favor of closing this road. I think I've made that clear in past discussions. However, I have received correspondence requesting that I voted favor of this from several people. And since I'm not here to represent my own interests, I will be voting against.
Any other discussion? Yes.
And this is just a reminder that it's closing to motor vehicle traffic. It is still open for seasonal use, either bicyclists or, or foot traffic. Still a beautiful place to walk through in the summer and fall.
Any further discussion?
Just my, the concern that I had, which I think I've answered for myself, is whether or not there was sufficient parking available for people. My family happens to love that road, and we don't mind walking it, we enjoy it, but we've often driven down it, but we can vary that. I think the benefits of closing it are enormous. But it looks like at the Lamb Town Road end, where the gate is, you could probably put four or five cars in there, would you say?
Maybe three.
Three? I don't think I've ever seen more than three cars.
So two the other day.
Did you? I don't know what's on the other end. Is that the, is that Grattan on the other end? And I don't know what, what's available.
There's a little more run down the other end.
So there'd be, you know, for the few, number of people who are likely to want to use it at any given time, they'd be able to get access to it in a safe manner.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. DeRusse?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Ceborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRathen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number four.
Make a motion to authorize the purchase of six signs, major alert motors, about legal safe clearance phase requirements that want to be provided for bikers on roadways. And it would stall four signs, one in each, one each, on the south leg of Shuville Road near Route 214, one on Sandy Howell Road east of the reservoir on the westbound side, one on Kirkland Highway south of the high school, southbound, and one on Long Pond Road in the descent near the Nathan Lester House on eastbound side. Signs would be co-located with existing signs, by preference.
Second. Discussion.
So land use has been looking at this for a while. We've got input from a resident, suggested with a license, and we supported this initiative to inform residents about the legal requirement for passing of bicyclists. So looking with what was recommended, recommended by Mr. Speth, and also looking at the POCD requirements, well, we thought that these four locations to start off with would be ideal. We have two signs in back of just like this six. The signs cost $75 apiece. See, that indicated that it is signed, that he has sufficient funds to pay for the signs. So there's no issue with that. So it was just a, just something informative to put on, on the roads to let people know when they pass a bike, someone biking, they need to give a three foot warning.
Any discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I could. I, I have to say, I have my reservations about this particular item. My concern is that, you know, we put signs, people are courteous, they're going to be courteous, and if they're not, they won't. But I will say this. I, I, I think people riding their bikes on our roads, that we should have better, you know, roads and shoulders and things that they could do that. But I will say that I think there's a responsibility on the part of bikers to be very, very careful with the, the way they ride. It was brought home to me, I was at a blind corner on the way home one day, just about to pull out from the stop sign, and a bike went, whizzed right by me. Had I been five seconds sooner there and pulled out, it would have been a very, very serious situation for that person. And bikers need to understand that, you know, they don't own the road any more than cars and automobiles own the road. There needs to be courtesy all around, and they need to be observant of the, of the rules and use some common sense, because we have, our, our roads are dangerous for automobiles, you know, they're, they're more dangerous for bikes and very, very dangerous for pedestrians. But I just think we need to have some good instruction and, and encourage our bikers to be responsible also.
Any further discussion?
I would like to add my comments to the mayor's. I am a cyclist myself, but I'm often appalled at the lack of courtesy from other cyclists who expect the utmost courtesy from automobiles. It sometimes is difficult to see a cyclist, and, you know, when you're driving a one-ton vehicle against the bicycle, car's going to win every time. So again, I would, I would reiterate what the mayor has said about, you know, use care, don't, don't expect, you know, drive defensively, don't expect that that automobile has seen you, and, you know, don't just run through stop signs and things like that. Use some courtesy. And the second thing I would say is, I would, I would suggest the opposite sides of Ledge Center as a location for the other two signs. Seems like an area where you get a lot of traffic that would see the signs.
We consider those, Steve. The, the roads that run through Ledge Center are both state roads, so we don't have jurisdiction in place.
have jurisdiction to place a sign on those roads, which is why we stick with town, but we did. We consider it.
Any further, yes.
Maybe Madam Chairman could put out a poll on her performance to say, for the last, put in competition for the last sign.
This has already been beat to death. We're out of some context.
Mr. I agree with your comments. Further discussion?
Yes.
So, I'm looking at the locations of these signs, and it doesn't seem, sure, this is the only just going to be a lot of discussion, sort of. But typically, you see signs like this at the entrance to town, as opposed to middle of town, out now. I look at a number of these, and they are like, as if you're leaving the center of town and going out of town, as opposed to entering town to make people aware. That's fine with me, and it just doesn't seem to cover, when I would consider some roads besides the state highways, where people.
Actually, these were, in conjunction with POCD, were recommended for bike trails, so to speak. That's one thing, these signs don't mark bike trails, don't bike paths. Okay. But based on the POCD, where recommended bicycling locations would be, and also based on a resident input from where bicyclists are frequently seen, these seem to be making most sense.
We also considered the number of signs, and we didn't want to proliferate the signs all over the town. We considered the borders of the town, but we thought it more important that eventually people, most people in town use these roads eventually. You only need to see the sign a couple of times, and after that, it raises your awareness of the law. That's the only message we want. Most people are unaware of this law. We did consider more signs, and we said, no, we don't want to mull around more signs, we don't want to see sign pollution. We also considered, if we put it on the borders, we might end up putting a sign right in front of someone's house. So we left it to public works to put it with a clear line of sight, not right in front of someone's house, because nobody would want another sign in front of their house. So we considered.
And that's the only reason why we suggested the code, like, where existing signs don't be ours. Yes. So I'd love a poll.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBrosse?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number five, without objection. I'm going to make the motion, and I'm going to tweak it a little bit to include the words from Mr. Jessica Witz. I move to remove from the assignment to permanent building committee the option of new construction for Ledge of Middle School. Second. Any discussion? Yes.
As a purist, there's no reason for this motion. Building committee has within its charge, and its purview, to make decisions based on what they're going to recommend as far as the product. There's no reason to take anything off the table, I won't say prematurely, because clearly the numbers indicate that decision will be made. But they have within their own control what they're going to go behind with, and the decisions being made. So, as a purist, I think it's an unneeded discussion. But given the numbers, I think that is the way we go.
Yes.
I think that if, if the, the motion is made and it puts the people on PMBC that I have in the highest regard for, on a more comfortable level as to their direction, then I'm in favor of this motion.
Any further discussion? Yes.
As the originator of the bold idea, I have to say, I'm disappointed, but certainly not surprised. We anticipated that it would school might cost more. I believe that what's happened is the renovation of the existing school is costing far less, which makes this now a significant difference to the taxes. So, on the one hand, I applaud the, the architects in the PMBC for reducing the cost of renovations to the, to the middle school. I am still disappointed. So I'll make my final point, and that is that I, I agree with Council France, and also that if we remove this option and new information comes to light, not that I think it will, but if new information comes to light, we can now not consider it. The municipal building committee can't consider it, or they'll have to come back to us, we'll have another long discussion into the night. But I don't really see the reason to take it, take it out of their purview. I, I have the greatest admiration for the work they're doing, said so at this council before. I think they make the decision, what's the best of a town, and I think it only limits our options if we take it off.
My concern is if we don't take it off, they will think there's some conspiracy theory, and we're really keeping it on because we have, and Mr. Jessica Witz is nodding his head yes. So, on that, on that point, I do intend to support this motion. And, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to agree for clarification of our intent, and because of my respect for what the building committee is doing. I think the difference in cost pushes it at this time in our lives into a prohibitive area. I will say that I think there's one mitigating factor to that additional cost, and that is a new construction at Ledge of Center would leave us with a not, a building that's not of zero value at the existing middle school, which, while we would have no idea at this point how it might be used, I would say that because it's a single floor and because it is handicap accessible, the opportunities to use it for a number of things theoretically, a rec center eventually, would, in my mind, mitigate the difference in cost. However, that said, I think there's enough in place for me to support the motion.
Any further discussion?
Can we put this in an X miles, Ledge of X one?
Yes.
I'd love to have those, guess, along into the night. So another miracle comes along that would support constructing is new or constructing is used, that we have, something, some, some new information comes to light, I'd have no problem going into the night with another discussion to add a factor.
I'll be the first one to bring it to.
I'll, I'll share your motion.
Oh, you want me to read it again? I just, let's see, move to remove from the assignment to the public, the permanent municipal building committee, the option of new construction for Ledge of Middle School. And would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBrosse?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries.
Motion carries?
Meeting is adjourned. Without objection, students who may come up and have your paper signed.